Fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, meeting of the planning commission order. Please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, thank you for this opportunity to be in this free and democratic nation that we call America. Thank you for the opportunity to be in this great county of Stafford with its flowing waterways, rolling hills, forests, farms, and wonderful neighborhoods. Please watch over us as we make plans to deliberate and discuss its past, present, and future. Please give us the wisdom and courage to be respectful, understanding, and forthright as we make decisions for our friends, neighbors, and generations to come. These things we pray in your name, amen. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll begin the roll call for tonight's meeting. Please make your presence known. Mr. Gibbons?
Present.
Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Mr. English?
Present.
Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Ms. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Appicella?
Here.
Mr. Acting Chairman, I'd like to make a substitute motion on the agenda. I'd like to take the election of officers and make it unanimous, the incumbents. That's my motion.
We have a second?
A second.
Mr. Gibbons, as motioner, I've been advised that the commission should take up your motion for each individual office separately.
I never won one anyways, do I? I'll make it for number eight, the incumbent.
So that's... Thank you. We have a motion and a second for election of a chairman with the incumbent officer being Commissioner Rhodes. I make a motion to close nominations. So, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Yip state.
Thank you. We have a new chairman, Mr. Rhodes, and I'll turn the rest of the meeting over to you.
Thank you very much. I'll make a motion for B, be the incumbent.
Okay, there's a motion for the election of the vice chairman to be Mr. Appicella. Is there a second? Second by barely beat you, Mr. English. Is there any other nominations?
Stephen can close it, but I'll close it.
Okay, motion closed and anybody... Okay, we're closed. All those in favor of the election of Mr. Appicella as the vice chairman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I move for C, the incumbent.
Okay, a motion and a second for the secretary to be Mr. Cohen. Are there any other nominations? With that, we will close nominations. Very good. All those in favors of the election of Mr. Cohen as the secretary signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed. We have the election of officers completed. I'll now move on. Are there any declarations of disqualification this evening?
I met with Mr. Payne about a week ago, reference to George Washington District.
Okay, certainly, and not necessarily disqualification, but for full transparency, meeting with Mr. Payne. Thank you very much, Mr. English. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, item number two, I met with the applicant too.
Okay, very good. Again, just for full transparency, a meeting in the interim period.
I do like that term transparency.
Yes, absolutely. There was, in the interim period, a meeting of Mr. Gibbons had with the applicant on number two, but no items of full disqualification is necessary. Very good, thank you. We're going to move on to public presentations. This is an opportunity for anyone present to present to the board as a whole on any item except for item number one. Item number one, the public hearing remains open for, and therefore we'll have a separate opportunity for comment and public comment on that item. But if you would like to speak on any item whatsoever, just anything except for item number one, you may come forward and do so at this time. When you do, we'd ask that you state your name and your address. Once you do so, a green light will come on indicating that you have three minutes available to you. Then a yellow light will come on indicating one minute, and when the red light starts blinking, we just ask that you wrap up your comments. So, anyone that would like to come forward, please do so now.
Paul Aldoski, Eight Picket Lane. Yesterday, when I went to the school board, I brought an empty envelope, and I wrote on the back of the envelope. And I got to discuss the IB program, but then we found out later it was just a discussion item. But for some of you, this is the fourth quarter, they call it. You know, it's the fourth year in your term of office. And if you ever notice, my name is W.A.L.D.O. So where's Waldo? He's at the planning commissioners' meeting. So keep watching that logo out there, you never know what's going to happen. You know, we had a new election of the Board of Supervisors to inform everyone, and of course, we have two pictures that are still out of date. And just so the citizens do know, that two of the supervisors are elected to office in three-way elections, which means they are not true representatives, they don't have fifty-one percent of the vote. So basically, whoever they're selected planning commissioner, they're also serving in that aspect. Speaking of planning commissioners, one of the key aspects of being a planning commissioner is you have to get certified and do lots of these aspects. And the BZA is another body that's in the county, it's called the Board of Zoning Appeals. And hopefully, in Richmond, we're going to resolve some of these aspects of do you be... Are you allowed to be a planning commissioner, or are you allowed to be on the BZA, or both? So maybe we can get some legislation on that aspect. The other thing I think that the planning commissioners really need to look at is your own bylaws. I know some of you do not live in the district that you represent. We have seven districts. It would seem to be nonpartisan that if you do not live in a district and you're representing that district, it seems to me like that's a conflict of interest. I don't know what your bylaws say, but I just want to bring it to the public's attention of some of the things that go on in the county that you're not aware of. Also be aware of that sometimes when large projects get planned, that sometimes the projects have large tax exemptions. One of the ones that I know personally was a YMCA that was going to be built across from a piece of property I bought, and it was going to be a ninety-nine-year tax exemption. I'm not sure if there's any of these existing for Walmart or any other entity in the county, but I do know Seven-Eleven wasn't a Guinness Book of Records, and it's the exact business that tore down a two-hundred-year-old magnolia tree. So let me close with, do you want more treetops or more rooftops in Stafford County?
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else like to come forward and speak at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public presentations, and we move on to public hearings. We have item number one, RC 1400155, the reclassification of George Washington Village, continuation from our last session. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please recognize Mike Zarath for the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. Yes, item, as mentioned, is the reclassification for George Washington Village. The project was a continuation of a public hearing that occurred originally on December tenth, two thousand and fourteen. Just a quick summary of, a reminder of what is being proposed. This is a reclassification of property that has several current zoning district classifications, and all those different zoning classifications would be combined into one zoning district that is the PTND, Plan Traditional Neighborhood Development, zoning district. The applicant is Augustine South Associates with Charlie Payne as the agent. The location of this site, it's shaded and hatched on the map, and it covers twenty-two parcels over one thousand and fifty-one acres. The property is generally bounded by Courthouse Road to the north, Interstate ninety-five to the east, Rameth Church Road to the south, and Killag Mill Road, and Akikik Furnace Road to the west. This is the image of the general development plan that was included with the proposal, and this shows the proposed layout of the project. This depicts development of approximately one point five million square feet of commercial development, a maximum of two thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dwelling units that do include a mix of single-family detached units. Those are in the yellow shaded areas, one thousand eight hundred and eighty-five of those, two, three hundred and twenty-two townhomes, those are in green, then seven hundred and fifty multifamily dwelling units, those are the dark blue, purple shaded areas. Also, the overall design concept divides these, this development into several neighborhoods or villages, and that does include a commercial town center, which generally is the red. The red area identifies the location of the town center. This evening, I want to focus on, at the last meeting, there were several questions raised by the planning commission, so I want to kind of focus on that. In your memo, the staff report that you received, we laid out all the different questions that were raised by the planning commission at the meeting. In addition, I did include an attachment that pulls out all the issues that were raised in the staff report, and just kind of simplified that on a four-page document for your reference. But again, want to focus on the planning commission questions that are kind of grouped into different categories. First questions have to do with the proposed community development authority, which is proposed to be established under this project. Some of the questions include how would that be established, and for a community development authority, that would occur as, or established as, by approval by the Board of Supervisors of a specific agreed-to document that sets out the terms of what would be provided by the community development authority, and how that those improvements would be funded. And there are questions of what improvements would those be. The proffers do spell out the improvements that would fall under the community development authority, and it does include the, some of the main improvements of the construction of Mine Road all the way from Courthouse Road to Rameth Church Road, Woodcutters Road through the project. Those are the two primary crossroads that are proposed. Intersection improvements at key intersections along the way, and then...
Good question. In reference to the CDAs, with the transportation impact fees, would that be like double taxing them if they had the CDAs in for the transportation?
I'm not certain how the, how the impact, I'd have to look into how the impact fees would apply in this case, if there would be a, because if the, we'd have to, I think it has to be evaluated on as to what the value of the proffers that are proposed, how much that is in relation to the transportation impact fee, so I guess I don't have that.
But the CDAs will be like a, not such a proffer, but that's just a separate thing that a homeowner would have to pay, correct?
Well, there is, the CDA payment is a separate tax.
Yeah, that's going to be some of the roads, and then you're charging for the impact fees on transportation, isn't that double taxing?
I'd have to check on that. I'm not, I'm not positive as to how exactly that would be accomplished in this case. Okay, so the improvements do include the right-of-way dedication that's needed, the, through land dedications, and cash contributions are proposed to go through the, cash proffer contributions per unit would go through the CDA and funnel into the projects. The bond payment method would be determined by the developer, and is partly a function of what's financed and how the structure of cash flow is to pay off the bonds. This question was sent on to the applicant, so they may be able to add on to some of this explanation. There was also questions about the county experience. There are two other projects in the county that do have a CDA that includes Celebrate, Virginia North, and Embry Mill, which...
And what's the other one, White Water?
Embry Mill.
Embry Mill.
Yeah, for the, mainly for the construction of Mine Road there.
Mr. English? Is it possible, also, staff could check in to see how that, how that's working with those two developments? I'm just curious.
Sure.
Sure. Thanks.
The next issue...
Mr. Chairman, before Mike goes on. So what happens if the CDA is not able to raise the full amount of capital that it needs to support the infrastructure improvements?
Well, the requirements in the proffers are still for these improvements to be made, so I would say that the project likely would not be able to proceed if the cash is not there to make the improvements that are needed for the project.
When you say the project won't be able to proceed, I mean, I don't see a linkage in the document, in the proffers, that sets milestones. So, again, I'm not, I'm not quite clear how that, how we would know when to stop allowing development, because the infrastructure improvements, for the most part, aren't, aren't time, aren't specific to certain things happening.
That may be something that would be good to clarify then, the proffers, ask the applicant to clarify.
All right, thank you.
Then, with transportation, there were several questions about some of the key road network improvements, Woodcutters Road and Mine Road. There were questions of what the value of this type of, these improvements would be to the county, and generally, as far as the investment would go. And basically, the question was, like, what, what percentage of the traffic using the roads would be generated by the development project versus the benefit to the county? So, because there's going to be some off-site usage of these, of these roads. And staff, through evaluation of the traffic impact analysis, roughly determined that anywhere from twenty-six point four to forty-one percent of the usage of Mine Road from off-site would, off-site traffic would utilize Mine Road was, was the estimate we could, we could derive from the traffic study. And the equivalent value then to the county would be thirteen point seven to twenty-one point four million dollars worth of value to use from outside of the project itself. And this is based on a, an estimate, estimated project cost of constructing Mine Road of fifteen, fifty-two point two million dollars. This was an estimate that staff had worked on back in two thousand and eleven with some transportation planning work. So, that was not a number from the applicant themselves, but we acquired that number through private, previous work. And through the evaluation of the traffic study, the data, as far as it related to Woodcutters Road, it did show that one hundred percent of Woodcutters Road would be utilized by onsite development. So, I don't know if that necessarily would be the case, but that's what the traffic study showed. So, in that case, all of the, all of Woodcutters Road would benefit, be of benefit only to the development. Then there were questions about the impacts of the network. Should the improvements not fully be made through the site, so there's not a complete linkage from Courthouse Road to Rameth Church Road? And staff commentary on that would, is that there would be some impact on Courthouse Road if there was not a full north-south interconnection. It would increase impacts on Courthouse Road to the east of the site, with cars having to travel over to access Interstate ninety-five, and then also likely impacts on ninety-five itself and Jefferson Davis Highway, as cars would have to utilize that north-south route as opposed to having that Mine Road alternative. And Rameth Church Road itself, they would experience, I mean, that would experience increased impacts as well as vehicles exiting the subdivision would more so utilize Rameth Church Road than, than Woodcutters and Mine Road.
Any kind, what kind of effect or anything it's going to have on Zachary Lane and Kelsey Lane? Is that, is that going to have...
It could have some effect on Kelsey, I know, because that would be connecting through...
Zachary.
I'm not certain.
I think Zachary and Kelsey are right there together.
Yeah, I don't believe Zachary connects through into the project, though.
Okay.
But Kelsey definitely, which showing an interconnection, I'd have to check on Zachary. There are also questions about commercial and residential phasing. There, some of the points we made in our, in our response was that commercial would be dependent on the interchange and road improvements that was noted by the applicant. Given this scale of, of development, you would need the enhanced intersection and road improvements to, to access increased development in this area. There would likely be, also, there was a question about whether this project, the commercial development, could, could occur on its own without the residential development. There would likely be a need for more residential development in this area to support any more commercial development in this location, given that you already have a significant amount of commercial already approved in Embry Mill and on other properties along Courthouse Road in this area. Also, there was questions about if staff could suggest any kind of phasing for the residential development. Staff is suggesting possibly a residential phasing of one hundred and fifty units per year. This is based on an assumption that the project would take fifteen years to build, and assuming consistent, steady growth over that full timeframe of the project. And those one hundred and fifty units would be appropriate for the townhouse and single-family units. When you get into the development of multifamily units, those tend to all be built as one, under one project, and so that one hundred and fifty unit cap would be difficult for that type of project to be, fall under that, that type of cap. Also, with commercial development phasing, that commercial and village areas should somewhat be tied to residential that is occurring in those adjacent villages. But as far as the overall phasing of the town center, the larger town center, staff would probably defer to the applicant as to what would be appropriate there. There were questions about the school proffers, if a school site had been identified, and it has, had not, but there is a new layout that the applicant will be providing tonight that just, we just received, and I believe that may address that, that issue. Also, questions about when the, the proffer lump sum payment would, would occur. The proffers say that it would occur at the two thousand five hundredth unit, again, assuming consistent growth of the development over the fifteen-year period, it would occur twelve and a half years into the project. That's when the lump sum payment for the schools would occur. And then there's questions about the typical school cost, acreage, and capacity of the different types of schools in the county, and that's, these are, are ideal costs that the county uses in their planning efforts.
Mike, these capacity levels, how do they compare to what is expected in terms of the number of students? So for example, how many elementary school students are we expecting versus the design capacity?
Okay, so, in this project, the school board, staff estimates that the elementary student projection is one thousand three hundred and nine students. The middle school projection in this project would be seven hundred and twenty-six, and high school projection, one thousand and fifty-eight.
So, so that, that tells us that for an elementary school, this project will fill up an elementary school, three-quarters of a middle school, and about one-half of a high school?
High school, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. There were also questions about the fire and rescue station site, and also when that would occur, based on the proffer language of providing the site at the eighteen-hundredth unit. That would occur nine years into the fifteen-year project, again, the project be consistently developing over this timeframe. With the costs, information that staff received from the county CIP, typical fire station costs might be seven point six million for construction. That includes to, to build the facility and also acquire the appropriate equipment just to, you know, the, the fire equipment needed. And then maintenance estimated in the CIP was two point four to three million dollars per year for a fire station.
Mike, just a quick question on the fire and rescue aspect. Do we have any information as to the level of service of the existing fire and rescue? I mean, if this is going to be nine years out before they get the fire station, it'd sort of be useful to know if they're already in that area under the gun, or if they could actually handle eighteen hundred more units until they'd get a new fire station.
I'd have to check to see what the level of service is at the nearest fire stations that would service this area.
Thank you.
Also, there was a request on, the staff had noted some need for additional studies, environmental studies, to determine the extent of the resource protection areas and condition of the cultural resources, and we're not certain of the timing of when those studies might be provided. And also, question about when we may get follow-up V dot comments on the traffic impact analysis. There is, V dot has requested a follow-up meeting with the traffic consultants, and they're working on scheduling a meeting which may occur as soon as next week. And also, questions relating to comments we made about the, the existing proffers that, that apply to Augustine, which is, the commercial portion of the site is known as Augustine South. There are certain proffers that are required to occur at the eight-hundredth unit of, of Augustine Central and Augustine North. Currently, the total unit number between Augustine North and Central is five hundred and forty-five units, so ultimately, there's about, what, two hundred and fifty-five more units to go before the Colonial Forge, Augustine Central project could not proceed before the improvements that are required to occur in Augustine South would have to occur. There were also, there's a request to kind of spell out the makeup of the thirty-five million dollars in improvements that are stated in the, in the applicant's information, and staff has requested a breakdown of the improvement costs that were provided. There's also a follow-up kind of question to provide a summary of the, of the proposal as it compares with the George Washington Village urban development area, and provide a mapping, an overall, overall map that shows the site in relation to the George Washington Village urban development area. This map is a map of the county's Future Landes Plan. The light purple area depicts the George Washington Village urban development area. And the George Washington Village urban development area calls for a more urban form of development to occur, where... where development might be on smaller lots clustered together and be more pedestrian-oriented. The George Washington Village UDA recommends a specific amount of development up to, and, and specifically to the areas south of Courthouse Road, I want to focus on. The area south of Courthouse Road recommend a maximum of three thousand four hundred and fifty dwelling units with a mix of, of units between multifamily townhouses and single-family homes, and one point six million square feet of commercial between Courthouse and, and Acquickey Creek. And then to the south of Acquickey Creek, eight point seven million square feet of commercial office space. The proposal itself, in relation to these recommendations, meet, I guess, the recommended number of multifamily units. There are slightly more townhouses, and the, the project itself is not in conformance with the recommendations. South of Acquickey Creek, though, where many of the single-family dwelling units are located, this area is where the office development is recommended. The proposed density and uses to the north of Acquickey Creek are consistent with the general recommendations of the UDA. And the form of development in the town center is consistent with the recommendations in this UDA. Staff does believe that the form of development in the village areas is not consistent with the intent of the UDAs, which is to promote more urban form of development. The general form is more that of conventional suburban development. There were questions and discussion about the adjacent private wells and how many are in existence. Staff identified forty-eight private wells on properties immediately adjacent to the subject area. And a question of how much would each person need to pay to, to connect to, to the system, to the public water system, and that would cost is eight thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Also, the, as you're aware, the county's working on developing land use compatibility standards around the Stafford Regional Airport. And there is a draft document that has been worked on, and there's a question of how this project would follow those recommendations. And there's, there's different recommendations, because this project is so large, different areas of the site include different recommendations in this, in this draft study. For the areas of the project, south of Acquickey Creek, the planned commercial areas are identified as being a compatible use. The residential development is not considered to be compatible within three thousand feet of the runway of the airport, and also not compatible in the identified H-three zones. Their residential development is, is supported with additional review standards in the remaining area south of Acquickey Creek. The areas north of Acquickey Creek, again, residential development is supported with additional review standards in the H-one and H-two zones. And the plan, the planned commercial uses in the town center are identified as compatible uses in that draft document. Other comments that were made, there were concerns about the project proceeding before the interchange improvements, the location of the school not being clearly identified. The amount of development located along Woodcutters Road was, was a concern. Also, the location of the park on the southern edge of the project is identified as might be, might be challenging for kids to access this park. And a request for comments from the school board, you did receive this evening, a memo, the school board discussed the issue at their meeting last night, and initially, the the comments from the school board staff identified several requests for additional land for middle school, high school site, and, and other things, and the school board, through their discussions, given the amount of development and growth projected, they would be, be they would desire to see cash proffers provided in lieu of the specific land. And also, the other comment was there was a request for the standard cost and maintenance cost of a similar-sized park complex, and staff was not able to access that information. Then also, again, you, you did receive some other new information. The letter from the school board, also, there is a letter from the applicant. They are requesting an ordinance amendment and, and comprehensive plan amendment, and they're here to kind of go into more detail on that. And as I mentioned, they have a new overall layout they wanna, they wanna show you as well, that addresses some of the concerns that were raised. And at that, I will leave it for any questions.
Questions for staff? Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gibbons.
Mike, was there ever a CDA in Wide Water, or was that a different?
No.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gibbons, yes, there was a wide, a CDA in, in Wide Water. It was for the purpose of constructing a road, which is called Wide Water Parkway. That CDA has stopped functioning. However, there is some residual funds still left over, and we'll talk about that a little bit tonight in another rezoning case.
Okay, so there's two active?
Yes.
One has problems, and the other, I gather, is all right?
I'd have to check on the status.
What, what would you have to check?
On the, are you referring to Embry Mill, on whether?
No, I think that's all right so far, but I think the one in the south has got a default, doesn't it?
Well, I, I believe the issue there is the, the road hasn't been taken in by the state. So, that's, I think, one of the issues, and I, I have to look to see.
Not to behind in payments?
I have to check.
Okay, thank you. Yes, please.
Just one more fire department-type question, when you check with them on that. Could you also see if there's a certain number of units that a fire station is supposed to be able to service, if they have certain baselines or parameters that way? That way, we'll know if one station is sufficient, or if we need, if it's insufficient. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And on, Mr. Cohen's following up on his question. Will they be able to decide where that fire station will go on that property, is, I guess, is that for the developer to ask?
That, that has been identified on the layout plan.
Did they have an input on that?
Oh, as far as the?
Location of where the fire?
Yeah, I don't recall them having a problem with the
Location.
Location.
Other questions for staff? Okay, applicant, please.
Mr. Chairman and other members of the Planning Commission, my name is Charlie Payne for law firm Hersford Fleischer, and we represent the applicant. Happy New Year to you all. It's always a pleasure to be here, and thank staff for its presentation. I appreciate their expertise and background information that they have provided to you and also to us, some of which we received just most recently, so I'll, I will respond to it to the extent that I have knowledge, but otherwise, I will give it my best shot. Before, well, we got it up, well, we assume we'll have it up, but I will, before I get into sort of our revised concept plan that we have put together, you all may have received a copy, I assume, that I sent to Mr. Harvey today, which was a request, obviously, for a comp plan amendment. That will obviously also require an application, but I wanted to make sure you had this in hand as to what the parameters were, or the issues that we were looking at in regards to that amendment. We'll be filing that soon after this public hearing, but I wanted you at least to have that in hand. And just very quickly, the issues that we are looking at, that we will eventually want this Planning Commission to look at, as you deliberate over the future comprehensive plan, is obviously the UDA, which you are looking at, and the capacity for the UDA to George Washington Village. The capacity is about forty-one hundred and eighty units. We are proposing about twenty-nine hundred of those units. They can't fit in the location that has been described in the current comprehensive plan, so we want to talk about the spirit of that issue, and why we believe that those units should be allowed south of Acquickey Creek. We have also talked about why the commercial should be focused towards the interchange, the new I-Ninety-five interchange. And again, all of this is in the letter that you have, so I won't go into too much details, because I know brevity is key. We have also talked about visibility for commercial viable uses for many, many years that have gone undeveloped, south of Acquickey Creek. We've also, and they're talking about future marketing conditions. I think yesterday's, Monday's meeting of constituents who are looking forward to new commercial and retail investment was very exciting to hear and read about. You had sixty-two people engaged in that discussion about the future of Stafford County, and the fact that they would love to see a stone bridge in Stafford County, and that's exactly what we're proposing here. So, we are good to see that many of the residents, perhaps who don't show up these public hearings, maybe a majority of the residents that we don't hear from could very well be supporting this type of project. We've also, in the proposal for an amendment, have talked about restricting any residential uses outside of three thousand feet from the central line of the airport. So, I think those are things that you've been looking at, and we too have been looking at, and you'll see in our revised concept plan that we've adopted many of those, many of those initiatives. Is it just asked for the computer? Is that what I need?
Computer, please.
Thank you. Yeah, perfect. Thank you, thank you, Mike. As you can see, we have significantly, or however you may want to describe it, in our opinion, significantly revised our initial concept plan. We have moved, as you see this red line here, we have moved residential, all residential units north of that. That, that line represents three thousand feet from the central line of the airport. I believe that was a recommendation between the committee, Planning Commission Committee, Joint Committee, I should say, and Airport Authority. So, we have adopted that. You'll see these pink-colored, or a little dark pink-colored units, these are the single-family detached units. Even with my glasses, I can barely see here. Obviously, this is the East Village, Central Village here, all single-family detached, West Village here, all single-family detached, and North Village, all single-family detached. We have proposed to move the townhouses that we had somewhat dispersed, I believe, the North Village closer to the town center. We had three hundred and twenty-two initially numbered, we've reduced that number to three hundred to fit the policy under the comprehensive plan, so we've reduced the number of townhouses. And as you can see, the commercial is still here. This is multifamily, I'm sorry, these are the townhouses in purple, and the multifamily's in yellow. Again, putting them closer, the more dense residential use is closer to the town center. The retail and the commercial is in red, and you'll see that we've got these commercial nodes spread out as well, in addition to the commercial that's located in the town center. They'll be spread out throughout the project. And this future commercial is not part of this rezoning, it's already zone B-two. It is our plan to also utilize that as part of this overall development. That's about three hundred and fifty thousand extra square feet of commercial. And please note that even though we have asked for a rezoning of one point five five million square feet of commercial, that's not our limitation. We would love to see it much higher than that, so that's just a minimum that we would develop the site for. Other changes, key changes, again, I've talked about the outside of the three thousand-foot area of the central line of the airport. If you'll also notice, our density for the units is more consistent with some of the staff comments regarding creating an urban, more urban setting. Units south of Acquickey Creek are, are more of two units per acre, north of Acquickey, Keek Creek are four units per acre, more dense. Obviously, there's more landmass south as well. The, we have expanded the park area from forty acres to eighty acres. You'll see the park area is located in here. We have located the school site, which is inside here. That was one of the issues and concerns of staff before. And we based the school site on the most recent Anthony Burns Elementary School site, and, and the acreage for the same. We again have concentrated, as I noted, more, more of the units in our urban setting, so that we can create more interconnectivity. We have moved the fire station closer to Ramoth Church Road, which I think was also a question, as I've.
Where is that? I'm sorry.
It is getting my bearings here. I think I just wrote it, or written over the red line. Here? Here? Justin, you can come up here real quick. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Right here, sorry.
Okay.
Right there, sorry. It's a small map up there, probably should cheat on my, my big map. We have removed the second connection to Acquickey Furnace Road. We, again, as I noted before, have created more commercial within the overall development of three hundred and fifty thousand square feet, which is already part, which is already zoned and not part of this rezoning. Maintain our trail connectivity. We have moved units away from Kelsey Drive. We've also removed the, the connection to Kelsey Drive. Right now, just because of what we would assume would be the fire department issues, we have only an emergency access showing there. So, there will not be a connection to Kelsey Drive. And I think you had asked me about Fitz, I'm sorry, Zachary, there's no connection to Zachary either. No, that's correct. And for purposes of Along Kelsey, as many of you may know, we own property along Kelsey, they will be single-family homes, very similar to what's there now. Again, addressing some of the concerns that were raised by citizens at the last public hearing. And again, we've got more open space as well, so what's the percentage now? Well, was it forty-three, so it's over forty-three percent, so we've actually increased the open space as well. I don't know if you have any questions on the redesign, or the, at this point in time, because I'm just going to move on to some of the other questions initially that came up, just so that we can keep moving on this, because this is obviously a lot of material to absorb, and still a lot more to come. On the CDA, we, just so you know, we have retained and had retained for some time a professional consultant, Unicap Inc., who has worked in the county before. They have closed about one hundred and thirty-five public funding programs at about two point eight billion dollars. So, they're obviously, they have lots of experience, we're working with them on many of the cost numbers and the CDA requirements. Staff has noted out generally how the CDAs work, you obviously have a couple of CDAs in the county that are, that are presently operating. What we plan to do before our next meeting, we hope, if, if so desired to continue this meeting, would be to have a draft CDA agreement in place to share with this Planning Commission, which will outline in more detail, obviously, our phasing, the cost, and the financing process. We believe, and there was a staff comment about an alternative to the CDA. I think the, the reality is, is that without the CDA being approved by the Board of Supervisors, there won't be a project. So, the alternative to attempting to finance this via proffers, and what that would require, and, and, and the impact that would have.
Can I get you to repeat that one more time, please?
The, as you may recall, in the last staff report, there was a comment that we did not provide an alternative to the CDA, meaning that we didn't provide sort of a proffer program, if you will. That the CDA was denied, it would fall back on the proffers, right? What we're saying is, is that if the CDA is denied, there won't be a project.
So, you're saying if the, the board doesn't approve a CDA, then this project is dead?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We just don't think, from an economic perspective, timing perspective, the county having to build public facilities and infrastructure perspective, it won't work for the town center. It just, it won't work, and we'll have enough time to do it. The, the key to the CDA is obviously the economics, and remember, I'm sure you all know about the CDA, there's no liability to the county, the CDA, the liability is to the property owners and to the developer. It's floated by a private entity. The county has no full faith and credit, no liability, et cetera. So, this is built by the private sector, which means you can build it cheaper, you can build it faster, and typically, you can build it a little more efficiently. Just so you have an idea of what we're looking at in regards to the phasing of this, of the CDA, because there's been some questions about that. The, typically, what will happen is, and what we plan to do, is the initial infrastructure and the initial development will be built by the developer. and the initial development will be built by the developer. And you may recall that in our proffers, we have a section that says that we would collect X amount of money from single-family homes, from multifamily homes, and from townhomes, and those dollars would kind of go into an escrow, if you will, to pay back towards the CDA. Mr. Gibbons raises a good question about what happens, you know, we've got one that's, maybe hasn't paid its debt, or maybe that's one that's failing, I don't know all the facts behind that one, but I've heard and read some of those issues. There's no escrow funds, if you will, there's no seed funds, if you will, to pay during a rainy day, and that's what happened, there was a rainy day that came when the market changed. What we plan to do is to build the initial infrastructure, with the initial part of the development, have those dollars setting aside, and when the rainy day does come, that would partially fund the CDA. The other ways you fund the CDA is going to be through a TIF, so it'll be tax incremental financing that will be part of the CDA agreement that we work with the county on. I'm sure many of you, or all of you, know how that works, and the county tax is at 100 bucks, we would want to get 10 of that 100 to pay towards the TIF. That's typically how it would work.
A question again about the CDA. How would you, how are you going to, if, say the CDA was approved-
Yes, sir.
-how are you going to get that to the person that's buying the home? How's that going to be related?
It's going to be, okay, yeah, so there'll be a TIF, a tax incremental financing that will be on the entire project, okay? That will be, so when a resident or a commercial developer, whoever pays for their taxes, like I was saying, I say, just use a round number, 100 bucks, the TIF agreement could be that we get a 10 bucks from that 100 to pay towards the CDA. So, from the residents, not from outside of the resident, from outside of the development, but within the residents, I'm sorry, within the development, they'd pay the TIF, okay? So, within the PT&amp;D, the TIF would be paid and collected. In addition to that, the second tier of that would be the collection of the proffers, okay? Which is about 35 million, if my memory serves me, full build out. And then the third part of that would be the assessments. So, each resident would be assessed a certain amount of money each month that we paid towards the CDA. Now, you're not going to fund the full CDA on your first phase, you're going to phase it over time, okay? So, the first phase, we're thinking is going to be about three or four years if this is approved, after subdivision plan approval. It will likely go ahead and float the first bond, about 20-plus million bucks, per se, which will allow us to start to the north and to the south to commence the construction of mine road. And then at that time, the question had come, obviously, about phasing in schools, we would also, at that time, dedicate the school site, and also pay the $10 million in cash at that point in time towards schools. So, the first phase would include schools. I know before, we had talked about, again, all this has to be revised in a proffer statement, and all this has to come back to you, but before we headed towards the end, now we're putting it back up the front, okay? Again, first part of the initial development, we're paying for the infrastructure, then about year three or four after that process begins, we're going to go ahead and start floating the bonds, and start building the infrastructure and dedications to the schools in cash. So, I don't know if you have any questions on that, that's generally how it's going to work. Again, more details as this process evolves, because this is relatively new to us, we just kind of got it yesterday, the engineers have been working hard on it, so we're still kind of working on the numbers as well. We're also looking at the numbers that staff has provided. Someone had asked a question about what portion was ours, well, we had an estimate of about 35 million in transportation, and staff has 52 million just to build mine road from Courthouse to Ramuth. So, we need to talk, we all kind of need to get together to get our arms around these numbers.
It's a good run.
Yes. We take 52 over 35 at heart, please. Just make sure I didn't miss anything on the CDA part, I've got lots of notes here, so forgive me. I've talked about how we would collect the funds, I don't know if anyone has any questions on that, again, a TIF, or the collective proffers and special assessments. And someone had asked, you know, what kind of happens if the debt's not paid, or bad times? Again, we've got this rainy day fund we've got set aside, which will be fairly significant, it's on the developer. Developer is securing the whole thing. So, the property within the development that's not otherwise been sold to other owners or third-party property owners, it's on the developer. So, developer would be on the hook, okay, at the end of the day, not the county. Transportation, as I noted, staff has, just for mine road alone, has talked about a $52 million cost to extend mine road from Courthouse to Ramuth Church. Our number was around 35, we're still looking at that as we crunch the numbers, and that doesn't even include woodcutter extension. So, there's still lots of numbers here to talk about, which we're happy to do. I think it'd be very important to, just as a quick reminder, this is a downzoning in regards to traffic impacts. I know that I stated that last time, that it doesn't always resonate, but remember, this property is already zoned by right for 462 residential units, which would cost the taxpayers, if you will, with no proffers, about $22 million, just using the county numbers, okay? So, that's, just want to make sure that we understand that. The other part of that is about 8 or 12 million industrial or commercial space could be built out, with very little requirements to build infrastructure. So, you wouldn't see mine road extension, you wouldn't see woodcutters, none of that. It would have a huge impact on Ramuth Church Road, huge impact, just base, just by looking at where our commercial and industrial properties are, and courthouse. It will have an adverse impact on the interchange if we were able to do industrial and commercial at our location without the infrastructure of mine road and woodcutters. So, I just want to make sure that we understand that. In fact, our project is 43% as proposed, is 43% less trips than by right. So, this is a downzoning from an impact transportation perspective, okay? And also, it's a positive zoning in regards to that revenue, so I just want us to remember that in regards to what we can do by right. Again, we're generally constructing two roads, which have been identified by the county, right, in its infrastructure plan, as part of its comprehensive transportation plan, that the taxpayers would otherwise have to build, that we are going to build. You heard estimates tonight, ranging from 52 million, et cetera, just for mine road. And it would be built by the private sector. Now, there's been discussions, do we look at trips in regards to, and I will tell you, this is the first time I've had many, many rezoning cases where staff has asked me to build a road, and that we would get credit for building the road, but this is the first time that we said, "We're going to build the roads," and they said, "Well, maybe we're not going to give you full credit for building the roads, because we think that you're actually going to be the only ones utilizing it." But that's not accurate, that's not remotely accurate. We will be the heavy user on the courthouse road, courthouse road and entrance into our town center, we'll use about 52% of that capacity into the entrance of the town center. But basically, the rest of mine road, in its four-lane capacity, is going to benefit the county. We're going to have less usage in the low percentiles, if you will, if you're looking at trips. So, the capacity will be greater if we build a four-lane mine road for the county, so, and for other users. So, when you look at, when you do a TIAA, or Transportation Impact Analysis, you're looking at approved projects, or projects that are currently in place, you're not looking at future projects. So, I think that's important to understand, that when you're looking at a situation, we're going to build two significant roads that the county has planned, it's for the future, which is what we should be doing anyways, honestly, as we should be building for the future, we shouldn't build it when it comes. The other thing that we're adding, that we're going to put in our proffer statement, is you had VDOT do a presentation here prior to our hearing last week, I thought the timing was good, for us to talk, to hear what they are going to include and not include in their package. We are going to, as part of our revised proffer statement, we are going to realign Austin Ridge Road, and we are going to expand Courthouse from Austin Ridge to Mine Road, which were both part of VDOT's initial plans, that's about 8 or 9 million dollars, in addition to the roads we're going to build from woodcutter extension and mine road extension. So, that will be part of our revised proffer plan. That will be built in the initial phase as well, so we want to time it with the interchange construction that will be occurring at the time. Now, county and/or VDOT's going to have to get the right-of-way for that, but we will build it, and we'll pay for it, okay? Except for our right-of-way, you know, whatever right-of-way we'll be dedicating, obviously. And again, we can get into the percentages of capacity, well, staff has not seen our analysis yet, so we still need to get that to them, we want them to analyze it, but I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised to see the amount of capacity that will be created by a four-lane parkway, if you will, on mine road from Courthouse Road to Ramuth Church into the interchange. The other important thing that we, I want to make sure we don't miss, is why woodcutters is important. We don't need woodcutters, per se, maybe a small portion of it for our project, we can connect the Ramuth Church Road for our development, we could do that, and still be able to have the same number of units. But, does it improve our development? Sure it does, but we don't need it, just to be honest with you. We're building it for several reasons. One, obviously, to attract folks from Colonial Forge into our development, so they go to the town center and spend money, that's a very positive thing. But it will also relieve Ramuth Church Road. The county does have plans to improve Ramuth Church Road, it will not have to do so sooner. If it wants to do so later, it will have a choice to do so, or not do it at all. That we'll be able, woodcutters will take a lot of that traffic that would typically go on Ramuth Church Road from our project or elsewhere on woodcutters. So, I think that's important to understand, as part of this process, when you look at evaluating what is a fair proffer, okay, for transportation. Schools, Mr. Chairman, I know you want me to get moving, I'm moving as quickly as I can. Schools, again, we're going to do this in our first phase of financing, first three or four years. We are going to provide a school site, $10 million in cash for the construction of that school. Just so you know, for the elementary school, you know, we're probably contributing about 51% of the students there from our site, so, but we're paying for, you know, half the cost, too, so about 22 million, I think, was the estimate on the school system for a new elementary school. And I believe that's at full build-out, equipment, furniture, a whole nine yards. And again, again, we're still evaluating schools. So, these projects are about economics, they're not about, you know, whether they can economically work, especially when you've got this much infrastructure you've got to build. It's not that we think schools aren't important, they're extraordinarily important, but you get bigger bang for your buck, greater tax revenue with infrastructure, it benefits schools. But we're also going to give money to schools, so that's what we're looking at, so we don't want people to think we're ignoring schools, because we're not, believe me, I hear about it every day. Phasing, we've talked a little bit about phasing, three or four years after approval, commence construction, start floating bonds, talked about tying commercial into this, and this is the first time that we had seen staff recommendation regarding, you know, limitations of townhouses or resident, or single-family detached at 150 a year, well, look at that, that may be something that's reasonable. We're still at two tiers here, well, actually, one tier, and here's a new tier, is that, you know, we wouldn't build a 751st residential unit without building 30,000 square feet of commercial, or having a permit for the same, and then we wouldn't go beyond 2,000 units without having 100,000 square feet of commercial. And I'm not trying to be cute, we're not saying, hey, well, you know, we're just going to just have a residential development here and be happy and kick back, that doesn't work for our project. The town center is what works, so we need the town center, but you have to have a rooftop first. It's all market-driven, probably read that in the paper today, it's all market-driven, you've got to have the concentration of rooftops there, that's just, that's just the facts. So, we all want that, we want it, we want to get there as quickly as we possibly can, we think there's some good synergy happening around the interchange, around courthouse. We're still looking at what we can and cannot do from a phasing perspective, but it is just so market-driven, you don't want to bankrupt a project by putting something, you know, that is just not reasonable in a proffer statement, that's going to have to come back here and get it revised. So, we want to be able to tell our investors, here's our plan, here's how we're going to do it, and hopefully we'll get them here sooner rather than later. And we are talking to people, a lot of people, on the commercial end. As again, we're not, we don't want to limit this project to 1.55 million square feet of commercial, which I would, I would argue is one heck of an economic center for Stafford County, I don't know if there's one, there's not another one like it, we'd like to build even more, so we'd like to go beyond that, which we, as shown on our plan, about 350,000 additional square feet, plus we've got commercial spread out through the project. Utilities, I know this is important to many of the neighbors and many of the people who came and spoke, I think it's important to understand that with this project, the utilities department's going to collect about $50 million in tap fees. I know that's going to make some folks in utilities who are planning to expand utilities very happy, and we're going to be more than happy to pay it. If we have an impact on property owners with our development project, where they have a well that goes dry, and we're the direct impact, what we're planning to do, when we start extending utilities into our site, both on the north and south side, we're going to put in escrow, $50,000 for each side. So, on the north, on the north side, we'll put in $50,000 for the utility department in escrow, $50,000 on the south side. If there's an issue where we cause a dry well, the utility department can pull from that escrow and go ahead and pay to tack for the work, for the tap fees for those individuals. We'll provide the easements, because we already have the extended utilities, so we're going to be able to do that as well. So, we think that's a fair number, because we don't think we're going to have significant impacts. I think the staff identified 48 surrounding properties, I'm not sure of those properties, who has wells, who has septic, who has water, who has septic, I'm not sure what the mix is. We thought that was a fair number to look at, looking at what the tap fee costs were. And again, what we evaluate is, like, if it looks like there's a, you know, a greater number of folks who are being impacted by it, we'll obviously contribute more if that's the issue. But we thought that that would be a fair number to start with. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I think I've covered most of the questions and/or bases. Again, I apologize that since we last met, that we have, we have sort of reinvented this a little bit. We heard you loud and clear, it's like moving an aircraft carrier, to try to make sure it works on many fronts, not only the financing part and the CDA front, but also conceptually. We've got RPAs, we've got wetland areas, we've got environmentally sensitive areas, we've got to be cautious about when we move things around. We've removed units, we have moved units outside, listening to the airport's concerns, listening to the Joint Committee, the Planning Commission, the Airport Authority about building within that 3,000-foot center line, we thought that that hurt us, but we made the adjustment. Because we thought that the airport is important, its future is important to Stafford County, we think we're going to help them, we think we're going to be an asset to them as well. So, we want to be a good neighbor, and we took a look at that as well. And we also listened to you, Mr. Chairman, in regards to phasing at schools and some of these other capital improvements, and we want to expedite those as quickly as possible. We will research the fire station capacity question, Mr. Cohen, you know, we haven't evaluated that yet, so we're looking at, into that as well. We still need to tackle this CRPA analysis, we're going to talk to staff a little bit more about that, this is a huge project. I mean, that's a, before even getting past you, if we were to go ahead and undertake that study, it's in hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the cultural resources analysis, I think we can probably get that done fairly quickly, we're going to look into getting that done as well, but we'll get, we'll get the staff, get back to staff on that.
Mr. Chairman?
I've got a couple of questions, but I think I'd rather get public hearing.
Yeah, so, and did you have, did you have more, Mr. Payne?
No, Mr. Chairman, that was it.
And certainly, we can, we can, if there are, I would just suggest, if there are primary questions that you feel should go to the applicant right now before the public comments, necessary to get some things out there, we certainly can do those, otherwise, we can always get back to the applicant afterwards, I would like to, they've been very patient, like to get to public comment. Is there anything in particular that needs to go to the applicant right now? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Payne.
Thank you for your patience, appreciate it.
And now, I'll move on to the public comment portion of this public hearing, if there's any member, and thank you very much for your patience, it is a very big project, there's a lot to it, so we wanted to make sure we get some information out there, but I do want to get to your comments. So, if there's any member of the public that would like to speak on this item, item number one, you may come forward and do so at this time. Just for, to set expectations, it is not a question-and-answer interactive dialogue, it's just an opportunity for you to put some statements out there, issues out there, and points out there. Certainly, if there's follow-on dialogue and an opportunity to get that addressed readily, we would certainly try to, but I just don't want to, don't have a misunderstanding on the, on the process here, but it is your opportunity to get to comment. So, I'd ask you, state your name and your address, a green light will come on, giving you three minutes, yellow light meaning one minute, red light, we would ask that you try to wrap up your comments. Thank you, sir.
My name's John Waters, I live at 53 Zachary Lane, and the proposed mine road will be in my backyard, I'm not very happy about that. And I went around the county, they say this whole project is based around the town center. And how do you operate the-
Computer, please.
I took some pictures that I wanted to-
Sure.
-go on here, I'm not sure who's operating that.
Oh, I got you, they'll get there, and we'll take care of this time.
And you just scroll through. I went around, took some pictures of all the different establishments in Stafford that are empty business. Right now, there's just, everywhere you go in North Stafford, there's commercial space for sale, empty office buildings, virtually on every street, where's that? How's that, straight down?
You've already done more than I could've.
Oh, okay. I mean, I only went through North Stafford, from Quantico Office- I mean, I only went through North Stafford, from Quantico Office Park to Garrisonville Road, and a little bit on Route 1 here, but some of these big office buildings that people have built here recently in the last few years, most of them are empty or getting that way really fast. Defense Department and the government's downsizing, and so these big companies with these big office buildings. Here we have a picture. This is 11 o'clock on a workday. It's virtually empty at this office building, at Barrett Heights Road. There's another view, the same office complex, empty. Center Street, my wife's company, General Dynamics, used to occupy an office right there. It was full at the time when she worked there. Now it's pretty much empty. Here we go, some more signs saying for sale, for lease. And this place here, Tech Parkway, I don't know what's going on with that, but those places have been empty for four or five years. Had salad delis opened up, went out of business immediately. They're just sitting there vacant. Another shot of the same little retail space, signs saying there's all this land for commercial development, stuff like that. This is another shot of Tech Parkway right there. There are some buildings in Tech Parkway that are pretty, you know, I think the government ones that are pretty full and stuff, but most of them, you can't even say they're half-full, because they're not. You can't be positive and say the glass is half-full in this instant, because they're There's just too much space. There's another one here on Garrisonville Road, empty parking lot, empty buildings. This place, I don't know what story is on it. It's not even, doesn't even have a for sale, for lease sign out in front of this place. It's finished, but nobody's occupying it, and it doesn't look like anybody's interested in it. More signs everywhere you go, and this is not just in North Stafford, on Route 17, all the way down Route 1. This is Quantico Office Park here. They've caught some people that are up there, but they've got a lot of space that's still undeveloped, right there. Empty parking lots in the middle of the day. This is right down Route 1 here, south of Quantico Office Park. More strip mall, empty strip malls, or partially empty strip malls. And this is the place behind the post office here. Had some people in it, but for some reason, they went out of business. This is a strip mall with the food line in it, empty spaces there. We have empty spaces in the Acquahia Park strip mall. This is across from Acquahia Harbor, the Acquahia Town Center. That place has been sitting there empty for, I don't know, five years now, something like that. And here we have the Acquahia Town Center. I'm sure a lot of people, you know, back in the day said, this is what we need. We need Acquahia Harbor, and we need a big fancy town center here. And here we go. What does it say here? Eat, shop, play, and work. Well, how many people are working at this new office building? Virtually nobody. There, you can shop at one of these empty stores here. There's only like two or three left.
Do you have very many more, sir?
What's that?
Do you have very many more?
No, it's almost done.
Okay.
Almost done, yeah. So this is, I guess, what the town center, when they tore it down, was supposed to look like when they rebuilt it. I don't know why they didn't. Nobody's interested in it, I guess. But where did it all go? Here, here's a good shot right here, great place to play, just like the sign says. And I just don't think we need a bunch of more retail space and stuff when the county's full of it and nobody's using it. What's it going to be like in 20 years with people? There's more and more people shopping online instead of going to retail stores, and more and more people are getting delivered, their meals delivered, instead of going to restaurants. So in 20 years from now, this place will be virtually obsolete. I think, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else would like to speak? Okay, well, we will end the public comment. Did you, I know there's a lot more information.
Do we have a soft copy of what he just said?
We can get those printed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm going to end the public comment portion, and we'll bring it back in the Planning Commission. I know there's going to be a lot more new information. Do we want to keep the public hearing portion open so people can, okay, very good.
There's him, the concern I got.
Please, Mr. Gibbons.
I'm the old clock watcher. Every time we get another meeting, we get new information, it comes off of our clock. So, I mean.
We do have a time limit of.
March, right?
Yeah, March 10th, which is really actually February 25th, because we won't have a meeting before March 10th.
That's correct. So I think that the developer, if he wants us to keep doing this, and I like to keep it open too, maybe give us a 60-day extension. Because we're going to be backed up against, I mean, another meeting.
We have three more meetings right now with the time limit we have. That's correct.
It's just a request, that's all.
Okay, well, we can, we did kind of end a little bit abruptly. I wasn't sure if there were other follow-on questions or open issues remaining that wanted to be addressed towards the applicant. I think you had some. Mr. Payne, if you could come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And of course, we have our consultants here as well, if I can't answer the question.
Just two questions for you, Mr. Payne. In reference, you said that you've got 43% more open space. Is that downsizing as far as housing? Is it going to be less housing now since you've had more open space?
Well, we've reduced the size of the houses, is probably a better way to put it. We have 22 less townhouses. We've created a little more urban-like feel to the south.
Okay.
So the houses, I might correct, the houses are actually, the lots are smaller than they were before.
So it's really, you haven't reduced the housing, then, just?
22 lots, 22 units is what we're.
And another question is, in reference to your, my concern is the well situation?
Yes, sir.
If the well, you said you're putting 50,000 on each side, so there's $100,000.
Correct.
There may be, and I know for a fact, there's certain places that county water does not run through there, because it stops at certain places. So you're going to have to dig a well. And digging a well is probably going to cost you about $15,000. So if you had a row of houses, they have, you have 10 houses that go out, and you're going to have to dig wells. Are you going to be able to do that? Because there's no way to have water hook up on certain areas if the county has stopped at certain places, that stops at the commuter lot, and it doesn't pick back up again. I'm thinking just below, up just up from Rockdale Road, so there's like a donut hole that there's no water at all. And then it picks up at Emory Mill, but it's not across. So what about that situation? How would you address that?
I didn't know about that situation. Very good question. If I can, I'm going to let my engineers take a look at it and see what that number possibly could be, and then I'll come back to you and say, here's, I think, what the.
And then also, I would think, if their well goes dry, I mean, how fast are you guys going to be responsible, responding to these folks? Because if it goes dry and it's 30 days to see.
They'll get a water truck and fill the wells like we had to do in August.
Right, and then, okay. So that's another question I'd like to know.
Well, we'll come up with a plan as well. If they do go dry, what our plan would be. How about that?
Other questions for Mr. Payne? When do you, while they're thinking, when do you think we'll have the revised proffers and some of the southern information you were discussing? Do you think we'll?
Certainly less than 30 days or within 30 days.
Okay.
Again, this is, this new configuration is relatively new to all of us right now. I mean, and we're still analyzing it.
And just to confirm with counsel, the ability to go beyond the time limit, that is with the applicant approving or agreeing, or questioning, how does that go?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And I respect, obviously, Mr. Gibbons a lot, and I appreciate his foresight in where this may end up, but I would ask respectfully to see what happens after the next meeting, where we are, and then at that point in time, I can address whether we can continue it. Is that fair?
Mr. Chairman, what bothers me now is Charlie was right, God bless him, so he came in and said, this is a game changer. When you take a look at the complexity of what we got here and how we got to integrate it with three other subdivisions that have already been plotted, it's going to take time, Charlie. So if you say after the next meeting, that gives us two meetings to work it out. And that's not fair. If it's worth all your effort to change it and try to work it out with us, I just think it's, you're pushing, I'd rather give it to the board now and say it's incomplete, and when it's complete, give it back to us, than let the clock keep going, and then we're up against, we always get up against the governor at the last meeting. We're looking at stuff at the 11th hour. So that's why I brought it up.
Mr. Chairman, I'm with Mr. Gibbons. I've raised this point several times on less complicated rezonings. This one is, since I've been here, the most complicated, and I feel backed up into a corner, especially in light of the fact that, with all due respect to Mr. Payne's comment, 30 days before we're going to get the next, you know, proffer, potentially, next proffer revision, I mean, that's a big piece of this. That puts us, we'd have one more meeting after that. I think it would help us all to know that we have more time collectively to massage this and see that it, I'll use this term, fully baked, before we, you know, before we go in the wrong direction here. So I think having more time and knowing that we have more time is beneficial to everybody.
Yeah, I think we are making progress with this very big and complex thing, but those are fair points. So what I'm hearing is a desire to know we're going to be able to work this deliberately versus assuming we will, because I assume we will, but.
I'm working fast, that's all I can tell you. I do not want you to have a half-baked project in front of you which to make a decision. That's not my goal. And I'm going to be successful if that's what happened. You're going to turn it down, and you should. So I'm not going to have a half-baked product by the time it gets back to you in 30 days. I will, we're going to, when I say that, you know, we're going to try to get probably revised proffers in two weeks. We'll probably have revised numbers by then on our CDA, and we'll have a revised GDP, I would think. We think we can get that done in two weeks. So I don't want to waste your time, so I understand that and I appreciate that and respect it. So we're going to hustle on our end.
Understood. And I would just submit that as you are working on those revisions, you might consider in advance, because if we get it and we meet back on this in two seconds, session after next, we will only have one other session act on it. I would think at that point, I would be surprised if everybody is very confident leaving that session, that they know they'll be able to close out the next time. So I would also be talking with your clients about what to consider about an extension in the process, and that too. That's my assumption. Maybe it'll be a perfect world, everybody, the skies will clear, and it'll be a beautiful sunny sky, the palm trees will be swaying.
It's always my hope, but it's January. But we will, during the, in between now and the next meeting, analyze that as well, and I will send a letter in to Chairman and to Mr. Harvey as to where we are with it and where we think we would be, and if we need additional time, we'll ask, we'll suggest for additional time.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant? Okay, there's more to come, but this is, this is your.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not afraid to give it to the board, even if it's incomplete, and say, this is where we are in the process. We only have, you only have a year to look at it. And let them either send it back to us, or maybe they get extended, because you know, it's just like Santa Claus comes at Christmas. They're going to be under the gun in the next month trying to get all of this. This is, like Mr. Appicella said, very complicated application here.
Mr. Chairman, before we decide on any action, if I might ask staff to also take a look at the latest proposal that's been provided just tonight, and to overlay, I know it's not been approved, and we haven't talked about it, you know, it has a ways to go, but the land use compatibility zones, if they could overlay that with the proposal, this new proposal, so everybody can see it in that context, I think that would be helpful.
Understanding it's not governing now, but still to have an idea how it would work. Great, okay.
For clarification, the airport land use compatibility planning.
Okay, just to see how it would work. Other thoughts or other points for anything out here? Mr. English is right on his button there. Please, Mr. English.
I hear you, what you're saying, Mr. Gibbons, and sending it to the board, but I think the, all fairness to Mr. Payne, I would like to give him another 30 days and leave the public hearing open and see where we are in 30 days.
That would take us to February 11th session, correct? So you.
One meeting.
At that point in time, we'd have one meeting to deal with.
If we can't come up, so we'll send it to the board as we have to.
And we could act right then if we were comfortable with what time we had left, in order to give the board their time.
That's my.
There's a motion to defer this to February 11th session, keeping the public hearing open? Mr. Boswell, be chief, sorry. Mr. Boswell, second. Further comment, Mr. English?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Boswell? Any other member?
Mr. Chairman, to the extent that anything is available that the applicant may have in the interim, if they want to share it with us, I certainly have no problem with that. Again, because what will happen is, we'll get it to Friday, before the Wednesday, when we have to look at it, I think the more time we have to digest it in between, the better, again, for everybody.
We are talking about the 7th and 8th of February, just so you know, lots of reading. Okay, yeah, no, I'm with you. Understood.
And if I can piggyback on Mr. Appicella, the whole point of keeping the public meeting open is so that the public would be able to give a comment. We really can't comment, because a lot of this information was new to us tonight, they clearly couldn't comment. And so, quite honestly, the most information that can be made available, that can be put some way for the public to see, even if it's on your own website, and you let us know, or Mr. Harvey know, and then we can stream it from the rooftops to people that can go to that website and look at the new information, so the public could actually have some input and be able to have informed comments. That would be helpful.
Great, good point, okay. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion to defer this to the February 11th session, maintain the, open the public hearing? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? Very good.
Remember to promise to.
Yeah, I heard that. Yep, okay, very good. We're going to move on to item number two of unfinished business, RC 1400221, the reclassification for Wining Creek. I assume we'll do the two and three together?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, please.
I'd like to.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to delay this one more meeting. I promised to meet with those people, and I haven't quite got the whole thing done.
The Wining Creek one? Is the, so you want to forego the presentation and commentary?
For the next meeting, I promised to meet with the homeowners, and I couldn't get it done over the holiday. I did meet with the board member.
So is there, if it's the will of the commission, is there anything to preclude, since we've had it advertised, deferring at this point? Just so I know the rules. Mr. Harvey, Ms. McClintock?
Mr. Chairman, my recollection is the Planning Commission held its hearing and closed the hearing.
So it's ours to do on that?
Yes.
Okay, what is the, Mr. Gibbons has a suggestion here, that we forego the presentation and defer this until he can talk to the committee, the folks he was going to talk to. Thoughts or reactions?
Mr. Chairman, I would second that. I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay, so it's a motion and a second. Further comments from folks? Mr. Gibbons, further comment? Mr. Cohen? Anyone else? I feel a little awkward that we're here at the point, and people are here, and the staff has presented personally. That's where I'm at, but however the members go. So there's a motion and a second, deferring this till the, what the heck is today?
January 28th.
28th, January 28th. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, okay, it passes 6 to 1, we have deferred. Very good, we are now on to item number four. RC 1400159, reclassification of reserve at Woodstock Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please recognize Eric Ely for the staff update.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission. If I could have the computer, please. Just as a quick review, the applicant is requesting a reclassification from the B2 zoning district to the R1 zoning district to develop a proposed 40-unit single-family residential development on a 35-acre site located at the intersection of Telegraph Road and Woodstock Lane in the Griffiths-Wide Water election district. Future hotel site lies to the north. Carl Lewis Park is to the east. To the south is Aquia Harbor subdivision, and undeveloped land is to the west, which contains the Brent Family Cemetery. A public hearing was held on November 12th, 2014. Staff has provided additional information in the staff report to address concerns by the public and the commission. In this presentation, I'll briefly summarize those points. So the first issue was the current state of the transportation network surrounding the proposed site, and staff continues to recommend full transportation proffers to address the proportionate impacts to level of service, capacity, and safety of the intersection of Woodstock Lane and Route 1, and also Telegraph, the intersection between Telegraph Road and Route 1. In the backup documentation, according to the capacity analysis submitted by the applicant, 80% of the traffic generated by the proposed development will impact these failing intersections. Additionally, we would like to note that staff has received additional information regarding the status of the proposed intersection improvements related to the VDOT study. The VDOT study did mention several alternatives to address the issue at the Woodstock Lane, Route 1 intersection. The improvements are contemplated for inclusion in next year's budget with the application of $1.2 million, which had been collected by the Wide Water Parkway Community Development Authority. The improvements will need to be reviewed by FAMPO still and for consistency with the regional plan before submission for federal funding. And the next issue was additional buffering between Lot 28 and the stream channel to the south, and also buffering between Lots 28 through 37 and the existing residential homes. The GDP has been revised to include undisturbed buffer within Open Space Parcel A, and the proffer statement has been revised to state that the parcel shall not be cleared and shall remain undisturbed. And this is just an excerpt from the GDP showing the two locations where the nodes are in Open Space Parcel A. The next issue was school impacts, and Wide Water Elementary is overcapacity, and Shirley Heim Middle School is approaching capacity. These are proposed to be mitigated by the 2019, 2020 school year through redistricting process. Additionally, the school division made a comment regarding the safety of the intersection between Woodstock Lane and Route 1, as it is dangerous for buses. They have to go up to the northern intersection, which is signalized. The next issue is the comparison. We were, received a request by the commission at the public hearing to compare the existing buyright and proposed reclassification development impacts. Those are discussed in the staff report in greater detail, but the summary is the evaluation supports the reclassification to a residential use within this area with mitigation of impacts to, there's a few public facilities where the demand is increased, as identified. The staff report also summarizes the past reclassifications, which went from commercial uses to residential uses over the past 10 years. There were four of them. And there was a concern regarding the buffer around Brent Family Cemetery. A comment from the public regarding federal code regulations. It's been determined that the buffer as depicted on the GDP is in accordance with the federal code regulations, and also noted that the closest points within the proposed development are at Lot 9 at 470 feet and Lot 27, which is 320 feet from the cemetery. The applicant also submitted this color rendering to illustrate open space and preservation areas on the subject property. Additionally, it should be noted that the applicant has proffered $10,000 to Brent Family Cemetery planned improvements upon approval of the first subdivision plan. And just to reiterate from the last meeting, staff does find these positive aspects to the proposal consistent with the established development pattern. The proposed uses and development pattern meet the intent of the comprehensive plan. The right-of-way dedication on Woodstock Lane accommodates planned transportation improvements, and the monetary proffers meet or exceed the parks and recreation and fire and rescue category recommendations. Staff also finds negative aspects which concern the intersection of Route 1 and Woodstock Lane regarding safety and capacity, and monetary proffers do not include per-unit contribution for transportation, libraries, schools, or general government in order to offset these impacts. And staff, again, recommends approval of the proposal with the consideration of per-unit contributions overall that are closer to the proffer guidelines, and also with a special consideration to transportation proffers in relation to the Route 1, Woodstock Lane intersection.
Very good, questions for staff, please? And Mr. Appicella?
Did, did you discuss with the applicant some flexibility on the CAS contribution? Should it not be needed for fire and rescue or recreational facility uses?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Appicella, the proffer statement does state that should those, that amount not be used for fire and rescue, that it could be used for transportation and, I believe, and schools.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the staff? Thank you very much, applicant, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the planning commission. My name is Charlie Payne, the law firm Herschel Fleischer. I want to thank staff for presenting information to you regarding our project and additional information that you had requested. Did I hear correctly that there's $1.2 million budgeted for the intersection? Or the?
It's not budgeted yet.
Retard?
It's available.
It's currently being discussed. There is money still left within that defunct Community Development Authority fund. One of the projects that's been studied and discussed with VDOT is the Woodstock Lane, Route 1 intersection for improvement. So it's possible as funds, if it's adopted into CIP and accepted by FAMPO as a project, could become part of the six-year plan and move forward for engineering and construction.
Very good, thank you.
I think it's also important to note that this project is still subject to impact fees, so it'll still be paying impact fees, 'cause there are $0 being paid towards transportation, so it would, it's not meeting its minimal amount in regards to the impact fees, so there's no credit, so that would be, so you would be paying per unit for the impact fees, transportation impact fees. And as staff noted, there's dedication of right-of-way necessary for Woodstock. And you may recall, this is a downzoning project. In fact, the traffic generated from these 40 units would be 96% less than what it could be done by right at Zone B2. So the traffic issue is actually being minimized. The intersection issues that are happening right now in Telegraph and Route 1 are existing, not caused by this project. This project's actually adding very little to that, in my opinion, of the overall impact. And again, this project is paying impact fees and other strong proffers for parks and recreation at Carl Lewis Center and at the Aquia Fire and Rescue. And if the dollars aren't applied to Aquia Fire and Rescue, they obviously could be utilized for schools and or roads in that particular area. We did meet with the Brent Cemetery folks that are here, if you have any questions for them. We talked extensively about what their proposed improvements are, were, or are to be. I think they're still working through that process, but we got a general idea of what that cost would be. We decided to make a donation in that regard, which we'll do when we submit the first subdivision plan. We also told them that, you know, we'll be there clearing the site the next couple of years. If you're there making improvements or in the process, we'll be a good neighbor and come over and assist you with that process as well. I don't know if you have any other questions for me, but I think we, staff has covered some of the questions. I know Mr. Cohen had issued questions about open space and buffering. Hopefully that, that rendering helps. And we did proffer the 50-foot buffer behind Lot 28, if my memory serves me, and also in between 28 and 37 to the adjoining properties on the other side. And we're preserving all the open space that you're seeing. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Questions for the applicant?
I just wanted, I just wanted to know, just here from St. Louis, Norca there, satisfied with what's going on? Diocese?
Sorry, we're being telecast nationwide, or something like that. If you could just state your name, sir, and where you're from. Appreciate it, thank you.
John Amrantides, I'm from the Arlington Diocese.
Are you happy with what's the outcome of this?
Right now, we're basically just mowing the grass, cutting the trees, and the grave site's deteriorating. So anything that we can get in order to try to restore some of the stones, the walls, the altar, helpful, very helpful.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Mr. Cohen, Gibbons?
You, John?
John.
You're the star tonight.
I get my exercise. Yes, sir.
What was being, what was discussing tonight, that this is really the only active cemetery you have in the diocese today?
It is not, well, Brent Cemetery is not active. I mean, it's...
But I mean, it's still a cemetery owned by you.
It's still a cemetery, but we've got several cemeteries.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
So it's, it's about what, 55, 60% of the parcel would be left as open space?
I believe it's more than that, but that, I've got a percentage here, sorry. 66%.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
Need a motion?
Okay, we'll bring it back in. This is Yorn?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we approve RC 1400159.
Motion recommending approval by Mr. Boswell, second, now Ms. Bailey, be chief. Second by Ms. Bailey? Further comment by Mr. Boswell?
I'd just like to say I had some concerns with the transportation issue.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Ms. McClendon?
I believe the applicant has presented new information tonight that the planning commission needs to accept prior to voting.
Oh, there's stuff that wasn't available? What'd they present, I'm sorry, I just?
I missed it, too.
I didn't register that.
I believe the proffer statement.
Proffer statement, okay, I apologize. No, thank you very much, Ms. McClendon. So, excuse me, we need to back off from that motion in a second, and we'll get to it in a moment. So first, we need to entertain a motion to recommend receiving, the proffer statement is new?
Mr. Chair, the GDP and the proffer statement are...
GDP, okay, so we need to have a motion to act, to be able to act on the new information that's received this evening?
So moved.
Most from Mr. Boswell, second by Mr. Cohen. Any further comment, Mr. Boswell, Mr. Cohen? Any other member? All those in favor of the motion to accept the new information that's received in order to act upon it? Signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? None opposed, very good. Now, we would entertain a motion to recommend approval of RC 14...
00159.
00159.
So moved.
Mr. Boswell, second by Ms. Bailey. Any further comment, Mr. Boswell?
Just wanted to touch on the transportation issue. Was a sticking point at the last planning commission meeting, but it looks like that's being worked out, so I think, and I'm glad to hear the cemetery is getting some help, and we've got a lot of open space, so I think it'll be fine.
Great, okay, Ms. Bailey?
Mr. Chairman, I too have concerns about the transportation issue, and I do hope that that will be resolved in a timely manner. I've had the opportunity to go to that intersection many times from some of the housing developments there, and it is a little bit tricky. So I do hope that that does come into fruition. But on the other hand, I know that some of the property owners that were backed up to that particular parcel, specifically those within the Aquia Harbor subdivision, are probably a little bit more happy to know that they'll be backing up to residential rather than commercial.
Okay, any other member? Yes, please, Mr. Cohen.
Just real quickly, along with the transportation concern and it's concern for the proffer for schools, however, I'm very pleased with the amount of open space, which is excellent. And I'm also very pleased about the buffering towards the creek, which one of the people who spoke last time raised, as well as the, sort of the buffering or keeping the open space towards other homes in place as well. So it was nice that you listened to the people who spoke last time, and I think you addressed those, so thank you.
Very good, Mr. Appicella?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important, at least from my vantage point, to point out that it's very rare that we have rezoned from business to residential uses. I mean, I, we've only got four cases in front of us. In three of those cases, the parcels were, or the piece of the parcels were very small, where the business didn't make sense. The fourth instance was Aberley, which, again, I think is a unique set of circumstances. So I, I would hate to send the message that we're changing our construct here in Stafford County, that we think residential is better than business. That, that usually isn't the case. In this instance, it is the case, because if we left the buyright zoning in place, it would make, it would exacerbate the issues that are occurring at the intersections. This actually is a better solution than what is currently in place. And so that, for those few reasons, I think it's, it's a good idea to go down this alternate path and allow a small amount of residential. And lastly, the fact that they're preserving this open space, two-thirds of the parcel, I think is also very laudable. So for all those reasons, I think this is a rare instance where we should go down this path and approve it, and that's why I support it.
Very good, any other further comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to recommend approval of the reclassification for RC 1400159? Signify by saying aye. Aye, anyone opposed? None opposed, passes 7 to 0. Thank you all very much, appreciate it. Item number five is just deferred and waiting for other actions to occur. Item number six, I think the board is actually gonna bring this up on their work session on the 20th, correct, Mr. Harvey?
That's correct, starting at 5 o'clock.
So they had talked about maybe doing a separate work session on weekend or some other things, but they've decided to actually start talking back on the UDA, and we've given them information, TGAs and other things, but they're gonna have a work session at 5 o'clock on the, on the 20th of January to, to discuss this. I unfortunately won't be able to be there. You know, Mr. Appicella is still looking at some things. At minimum, I intend to draft up something to capture some of the macro points that we have submitted before. I would share that with everyone before I would send it in, but, Mr. Appicella?
Mr. Chairman, the 5 o'clock meeting is almost impossible for me to make. I would request that perhaps our secretary and maybe one other person attend, if they, they would like to sit down on it, so we can, you know, get direct feedback on the, on the context and outcomes of that discussion.
And just to remind, we did have the opportunity to talk down with the chair and the vice chair several weeks ago to talk a bit about this. They've invited the chair and vice chair back. Both of us just can't figure out how to make it. But if, if others would at least like to be there to hear the conversation, maybe to participate in, I'm sure Mr. Harvey could share that with them if there, if there are one or two others that are available. And again, I'm gonna try and, I'm gonna try and scribe some things down that I would share with you first, that I would also submit to them in advance of that. So if you would consider that, that would be helpful. Okay, item number seven, new business, Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Blackburn's going to give a staff presentation regarding some of the cluster scanners we find throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. This was initially requested by Mr. Appicella in concerns about our current cluster regulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commission members, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
As Mr. Harvey stated, at your November 11th meeting in 2014, you voted to request additional information on cluster provisions throughout the Commonwealth. One of the first, and several questions were asked. First, it was the background of cluster provisions in the Virginia Code. I provided you with three major bills. The first one was done in 2002, House Bill 346, and that provided cluster provisions to be optional. It also stated that it was to be a buyright without increase in density, and, but that you could increase the density with a special approval. Then in 2006, Senate Bill 374 was adopted. That made it mandatory for localities with 10% increase in population, and it must be applicable to 40% of the land that is agricultural and residential, that it shall be a buyright use with the same criteria for density otherwise permitted, that you could increase the density by special approval, or as a buyright in compliance with standards in the ordinance, and it discussed existing ordinances as of two thousand two to be in compliance if the cluster is a buyright notwithstanding other requirements. In two thousand eleven, Senate Bill was passed 783, and that included provisions for definition of the open space or conservation areas, and also talked about existing ordinances as of two thousand eleven shall be brought into compliance. The next question was to identify the results thus far in our county. So far, we have two, for the R1 clustering, so far, we have two approved subdivisions, Brook Village and... Shelton Knowles. Brook Village, the original lots, if there had been no bonus provided through a cup, was fourteen at one point five dwelling units per acre. They received a cup for twenty units at two point one dwelling units per acre, which is an increase of six, and Shelton Knowles was seventy-one lots at one point five dwelling units per acre, and their conditional use permit allowed for one point nine seven units per acre, which provided for ninety-four units, an increase of twenty-three. I also provided you copies of their layout as far as using the open space goes. And then there was the list of the Virginia jurisdictions that provide bonus density as part of their cluster provisions.
Susan, before we move on from the subdivisions that have already been approved, there are some that I'll say are in the queue waiting for board approval, like Courthouse Manor, that were also bonus density type subdivisions. Were there any other besides Courthouse Manor you can think of?
There is the one that was not heard tonight, Winding Creek, and I think they're only getting three, and which was the other one?
There's also one off of Trusslow Road where it's not quite made it to the planning commission yet.
Okay, Woodstock doesn't have any bonus density at all. We've got like three.
Right, I guess my point is it's not just these two.
Yeah, yeah.
It's two that have been approved, but...
We have a few in the works, and I would be more than happy to get their latest layouts to you all and their numbers.
Thank you.
That's no problem with that. And out of all the jurisdictions in the state, there are forty-nine jurisdictions that are required to have cluster provisions. Out of those, thirty-six have them, and out of that number, eleven have the bonus densities. And I gave you a list of all of those jurisdictions and basically what they did as far as bonus density goes, why they were able to do it. For example, some of them, just because you had open space, you got to have more lots. Two that were in particular of interest that actually had some real design standards was Amelia County and Dinwiddie, and I provided that information to you all. A follow-up to that, we were requested to get in touch with Dinwiddie County, which we have done, to ask a few more questions of how they did what they did, and we have not heard, I've heard back that they're working on getting it back to us, but we have not received the information as of yet. They did have a two-hour delay, and I know they had worse weather in the last couple days than we did, so... As soon as I get that information, I will forward it on to you. And do we have any questions?
Questions? Not really directly related, but looking at the layout for Shelton Knowles, did that modify, didn't they used to have two entrance exits off of Shelton Chop Road? Did they convert one to a cul-de-sac, or was that always only one access to Shel...
I think that was always...
Always one, okay. Yeah, they're going to, interpartial connector off of, well, they've got...
Right, to the south.
Potential interpartial connectors that could go to the east. They've got the one that's going to the Shelton Woods to the south. Some reason, I just thought there were two, so I was a little surprised. Okay. Sorry, that was not necessarily germane to this, but I... Mr. Appicello?
Just a process question. So if we wanted to consider either adopting performance standards and/or eliminating bonus density, what would be our path forward? How would we, how would we proceed?
Well, as far as it would require, a bonus density change would require an amendment to the code, and we would go through that process to request that the board be interested in this, if it was...
We'd ask the board if they wanted to refer to us to modify the ordinance, to advertise it?
Yes, and the commission could sort of draft an initial version to send to the board for their further understanding of what you're asking for.
So that'd probably be the best way forward, that we get staff working on something, we kind of think it looks good, send it to the board to consider if they want to refer to us and authorize. Folks like that idea? Anything you need from us, Harvey?
Well, if there's any thoughts that the commission has far as what sort of bonus density and/or what sort of performance standards you may be interested in having included in the draft.
Mr. Appicello?
Mr. Chairman, quite frankly, I like a hybrid of the two that we have from Dinwiddie and, sorry, what was the other county?
Amelia.
Amelia. Dinwiddie, I think, goes closer to, and it's still not clear to me whether what they're doing is permissible, and that's something I think we need to potentially research, but it sets, I don't want to use benchmarks, but it sets certain parameters that would allow developers to achieve greater or bonus density based on the amount and type and contiguous nature of the open space. So I mean, my preference would be to go in that direction if my fellow commissioners are of the same mind.
Other thoughts? I think it's a start. Okay, it sounds like everybody agrees.
I think the only other point I would make is if it, because I believe we, the county has adopted a legislative package, and is this one of the issues that there, that was pushed forward to allow us to, I guess, somehow prescriptively establish standards more so than may currently be allowable under the code?
The requested legislation would give the county some additional wording and emphasis for having a consolidated open space area, but not necessarily have any other performance standards.
So again, my only, my only concern is, I've looked at Dinwiddie's ordinance, I'm still not sure that it's necessarily in compliance with the code, and my thought is if we can't get there from here, then our other alternative to present to the board is to eliminate bonus density unless and until the legislature gives us that capability. Just kind of add that to the conversation.
Okay. Can I add that to the correspondence communication going back? Okay. So as you can develop something, we'll bring it back and we'll chat on it.
Okay.
Very good, thank you very much for that. And we run the planning director's report. Mr. Harvey, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on your reappointment.
Woo-hoo.
I have two items of business to discuss with the commission tonight, the first item being your planning commission meeting schedule. Staff has put together a draft based on the normal meeting cycle of the second, fourth Wednesdays of the month. You will note that there are, right now, no proposed breaks in the schedule, so that would be for the commission to decide how you want to adjust the schedule as initially proposed. Once you adjust the schedule, you can vote to accept it as your official schedule for the year, and then we will post it online and take appropriate measures.
Historically, if there has been a meeting that was going to hit very approximate to Thanksgiving or Christmas, those were ones we would question whether or not we wanted to retain on there, and we happen to have ones that do that again this year. But that, yeah, and then the other, other thing historically has been how we approach the summer to give a little bit larger windows for staff to take off, everybody to take off and try, try and work some things. Prior precedence before last year had been that you'd work a couple in a row, but there was concerns last year that that gets too big a spread in the schedule, and it causes too much to back up, so last year, I think what we did was we did the first one in July and the first one in August, we dropped out as, as another approach, but we can certainly entertain any thoughts folks have.
Mr. Chairman, again, I would start with the one closest to Thanksgiving and the one closest to Christmas, and recommend that those be, those dates be removed from the schedule, and the July eighth obviously is very close to July fourth, and kind of what you were talking about, if we were going to alternate, then that would, that would likely mean that maybe the twelfth we'd also drop off. So I don't recall what we did in June, if we had two meetings in June or not.
Yeah, we did have two meetings in June, that's true. We actually had to mess with one of them, didn't we?
Mr. Chairman, the commission canceled its second May meeting in order to accommodate the retreat.
Retreat, yeah, that's what we did, so that...
So the commission essentially had three meetings in June.
Right.
So just to kind of summarize, my recommendation is to, to remove July eighth, August twelfth, November twenty-fifth, and December twenty-third from the schedule.
Okay, so our motion in order to say we're going to adopt the schedule is to adjust the schedule first, and before we adopt it, to drop July eighth, July, drop July, August twelfth, drop November twenty-fifth, and drop December twenty-third. Any other suggestions?
Mr. Chairman, I still believe, and I keep checking, Mike Zarev double-checked with me, but that in March, the twelfth, that's written on the piece of paper, is a Thursday. So it would, either we're meeting on a Thursday...
You would be right.
Or it needs to be the eleventh.
Yep, you're right, that should be March eleventh, okay. Other, other clarifications? Yeah, sure. Okay, so everybody good with that, which is correcting the typo on March, dropping July, dropping July twelfth, dropping November twenty-fifth, and dropping December twenty-third? If so, say aye? Aye, okay. So with that, then with that modified schedule, now that we have just said we want to make as our schedule, we just modified the schedule. Now we need to approve the schedule? Or can we just say we approve the schedule? I think we can say we approve the schedule.
I believe you approved the modified schedule.
Yeah, we just, that's what we did, by golly, okay.
Mr. Chairman, also, Ms. McClendon pointed out to me that November eleventh is Veterans Day, which is a federal holiday. Unlike most federal holidays, that holiday typically does not occur on a Monday, it occurs on the actual day. So again, we would probably need to consider scheduling it a different date for November, since we're already canceled the twenty-fifth.
How about, how about November eighteenth, then? What do folks want to do? Just right in the middle of the two? Man, it's right a day after the board will have met, but it's just a quirky month. Is there, is there a motion to modify our just recently adopted calendar to drop November eleventh and add November eighteenth?
Make a motion.
Most from Mr. English? Second. Second one, Mr. Cohen, any further comment, Mr. English? Mr. Cohen, any other member? Alls in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, there we go, we have modified our recently modified agenda, schedule, rather. Any other items? I note that February eleventh is close to my daughter's birthday, oh, no, okay. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, continuing with my report, I've included in the mail-out a draft of the planning commission's annual report from last year. As you recall, state code requires the commission to provide a annual summary of its activities to the board of supervisors on an annual basis. I've taken the liberty of drafting the annual report in a similar format to last year's report. You notice overall, there was a slight reduction in the total number of meetings. However, I believe that the workload was a bit intense. There was also a reduction in the total number of applications, but when you look at the number of committee meetings that occurred and the in-depth issues that you got into last year as a commission, there was a lot of work accomplished, even though the quantitatively it may not look as like there was as much work as the previous year, but qualitatively, I believe there was.
So is there a particular deadline that this has to be submitted? I know it's required to be submitted, but is there...
No, sir.
Okay. So are folks, do you want more time to kind of read through it all over it? Are you good with it? Any? It was, it was, it was on the plan, it's on the agenda items, it was in the electronic?
Says annual report.
After item seven, okay. Would you like to just, we can defer a session, then we can finalize?
Do we mind?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's okay if we do it next session, right? Okay, so if you, if any last things come to mind, we'll, we'll close this out next time. Okay? All right, cool.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harvey, appreciate it. County attorney's report?
I have no report at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. McClendon, Happy New Year to you. Committee reports. Gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the regional airport land use compatibility plan, the subcommittee met and had our final meeting on December eighteenth. We unanimously approved a compatibility plan, a matrix, and associated comp plan amendment changes. This follows over six months of effort by the staff and the subcommittee. I believe, I hope Darryl believes as well, that the final product was well researched and vetted, and incorporated information and approaches recommended by several primary sources on noise, airport noise and safety issues, and as well incorporated model compatibility language and examples from other states and jurisdictions. I also think, and it was stressed as we were considering this effort, that the whole process was open and transparent. All the meetings were publicly announced, albeit not as well attended as I might have thought they would have been. We held a public briefing in an open house on November sixth. The public was given an opportunity to provide comments during all of our meetings at the open house, and as well, they were invited via a couple of advertisements to submit comments, and that comment window was over several weeks. The recommended package incorporates several comments that were provided, or addresses several of the comments that we received. Throughout the process, I remarked, and I feel strongly that the staff did excellent, excellent work here, and they really did a great job, provided really solid support. Going forward, I think the, the staff and members of the committee would like to brief out the plan at our next meeting or the following meeting, if that works better. At that point, the commission could decide how to proceed, either to send the package forward to the board to get further guidance and direction, or we could work internally to amend the product as part of a planning commission public hearing process. But we can decide that after, after it gets briefed out.
Great. Ms. English?
Yeah, I would just like to say the staff was the backbone of this whole committee report, this report, and we spent a lot, a lot of hours there, but they did, they did the work, and it was an excellent job on their part. They need a raise, Jeff.
Put Jeff on the spot, good job. Well, I'd like to, certainly, I think there is no lack of appreciation and respect for the work of the staff by any member of the planning commission, and it always shows through their, their efforts. But I'd like to also thank our fellow commissioners who've served on this joint subcommittee to work on this, kind of churn through it and really, really drive it to a, to a good quality product, and looking forward to further working on the proposals that came out of that, so thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have you, the commission, send a note to the county ministry and the board chairman on that staff's.
Will do.
I mean, I've read a lot, been to a lot of meetings, but quality really comes out every time.
Here, here. Okay, very good. Chairman's report, just like to, our talks about the twentieth of January and the board going to discuss the work session five o'clock, the UDAs in the future, and where do they go, and what do they become, and how do we, how do we guide those forward, so if someone is available or interested to attend, I think that'd be a very positive thing, just let me know. Secondly, just wanted to, just wanted to highlight about, just the privilege it is to work with you. I like the dynamic that we have here among the seven of us. It's, it's very, very positive. It's, it's a pleasure, the respectful way that everybody works towards issues, just want to, just want to thank you for, for that. It's, it's just, just a privilege to work with you, and certainly, as everyone has said, it's, it's just a pleasure to work with our, our great staff. So what we need, what committees do we need to address now, Jeff? Does ARB just stay the same until she hides from us, or how does that work?
Mr. Chairman, the commission members that are on the various boards and commissions such as the ARB and Parks and Rec representative, they would stay the same unless the commission made a change.
Or unless they screamed? Is that what you said? Okay, got it. Anyone with concerns about what they've been doing?
Mr. Chairman, it's not a concern, I hate to throw this out there, but at what point would it be appropriate for us to revisit the comp plan? It's, I think, between the five-year... I think it's five-year maturity date. So I'm not saying we have to talk about it tonight or make any decisions tonight, but, and I know the UDA is probably gonna, how that progresses is largely going to influence, I think, to a great extent, what if any revision should be made. But I think it's something we need to think about and keep in our hip pocket.
You mean, all the tweaking we do doesn't count as an update? Mr. Harvey, what are your thoughts there, by the way?
Mr. Chairman, the code requires that the Plan Commission reevaluate the plan every five years. It doesn't require any action be taken. But as we've discussed and the chairman alluded to, the issue of what to do with the UDAs would have a significant impact to our comprehensive plan. So that would be potentially the impetus to update the plan, provide fresh data like population projections and other information that's included in the plan, such as capital facilities or in the planning process versus what's been built in the last five years and those types of things. So certainly, this is an opportune year to, as a fifth year, to refresh the document.
Okay. Are we best served, though, to have some folks step aside, be a subcommittee to work on? That with you? Should we do it as a whole, or what would you propose?
I guess part of that would depend on the extent to which the commission wants to make changes. If we're getting into a significant readjustment of land use and transportation and utility infrastructure, we probably do need to have a more in-depth view and which would take more time, probably beyond the scope of what's available for the commission as a whole. But if it's more so find out what the board wants on UDAs and if it's not very intense, then possibly we could come back and, like I said, refresh the document and bring it back to the commission as a whole on a periodic basis.
Okay. Thoughts of other commissioners?
I think that makes sense that we get the direction on the UDA and then get that updated. That would be a big further refreshing that through the refreshing part that might trigger any other items that.
And then if we need to dive further, we'll, so if we're going to create a committee?
I wonder if that's something that folks might want to bring up. I don't know how participatory the meeting might be on the 20th, but maybe give a sense to the board that this is something that's also in their wheelhouse and they might want to think about giving us some direction as well.
Okay. Just to confirm, so get ARB, but what are our other members? Where we've got folks?
We have a representative on the Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation, right now, Mr. English? Would you like to do it, Mr. Boswell? Okay, very good. Anybody got any issues with that? That works? We don't have to nominate and vote, right? We just decide?
I believe, Mr. Chairman, it's prerogative of you to assign commissions or committees and members.
But we work with consensus here, okay? And is there one other? I'm trying to remember. Do we do the TRCs individually by our district?
That's correct. And Mr. Apicella sits on the BZA as an alternate, but not as a Plan and Commission appointee, however he is on both bodies, which is permitted by code.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, please?
But there are periodically, Mr. Chairman, committees that you establish or meetings that you attend by virtue of being on the commission. For instance, last year, you attended several meetings with the city of Fredericksburg and Spotsylvania County regarding the city's comprehensive plan update. There was a committee recommendation that committee hasn't met yet.
Well, let's not leave that, because I actually happen to be sitting next to Mr. Millday. Was it last night or the night before? I can't remember. And it sort of came up, some folks were talking about economic development along our pristine waterways. So I mentioned to Mr. Millday that we actually thought that we created this subcommittee, but it was just an issue of trying to get us together at a convenient time. I don't know if the board's appointed members to it, but I don't think we should lose sight of it. I think it's still a good idea and maybe something we should.
We're really just waiting on them, right?
We are waiting on them, but I think maybe if Mr. Harvey can pulse the board and see if that's something.
Stafford has the most shoreline of anybody in the Chesapeake Bay.
I was surprised by it. I remember hearing that. So could you move them along, Mr. Harvey?
I'll do my best, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. TRC, do we have what we need for TRC? Does anybody have one? You got time? Nine o'clock? Everybody got the time? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, and you should thank the reporter for being here. She's always diligent.
I know, she's great. I'd like to let you know that you need to get my permission in writing to use my name.
Yes. One thing, it's sort of a tag along to something that Mr. English asked when we had VDOT come and present to us. They gave a presentation on one project, which was the Courthouse Road project. And then I think it was the next week that, before the Board of Supervisors, they had somebody present an update on everything that was going on in the county. And that might be, since we talked about having quarterly addresses by VDOT, that might be the way to go for those quarterly ones, is not just a specific project, but to let us know what else is going on in 17, 610, et cetera.
How long was that presentation?
Oh, it was.
Thirty-five minutes, wasn't it?
I don't think that was quite long. No, it wasn't as long as ours, I don't believe. But it may have been fifteen, about maybe a half hour.
You say Mr. Apicella wasn't at the meeting then?
There is one other thing I'd like to bring up, and I think it's important to all of us, which is the extra ten days that we talked about. And I think, Mr. Chairman, you and I mentioned it in our meeting with the chairman and the then-chairman and vice-chairman. They seem to be receptive to the idea. I don't know where that is, but I would not like to lose that thought. I think those extra ten days would be very helpful to this planning.
If, 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 okay with everyone, what we'll do is we'll do a very short little communication memo to the new chair, new vice-chair, shaping that same comment, because the vice became the chair and so it shouldn't, hopefully, there's a memory there. But just to restate that and remind that that is within their authority. Okay? We'll do that. Very good. And Mr. Harvey, since we were gonna, VDOT was gonna, we're receptive to coming back anyways. If you could just express to them that if they could do a larger, kind of a macro view of what's going on, that'd be, that'd be great, would they?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I believe that what Mr. Cohen was referring to is that typically during the county administrators' report at board meetings, they have the Public Works Department come and make presentations. And VDOT does come, but a lot of times they do what we call pothole patrol. So I guess the question would be, what type of information are you looking for? Are you looking at information regarding construction projects or more so problem areas in the county or?
I think it's more construction projects, yeah.
If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to work that through the Public Works Department. And if necessary and where needed, they can invite VDOT to help us out. Because the county right now is currently involved in a number of projects where we are the administering agency.
Okay. However you believe is best to present it. Just get an idea of the infrastructure capabilities that are going on and the potential that's coming in the future, I think.
So, Mr. Chairman, based on the discussion, we'll try to have that on a quarterly basis.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
It would also be helpful to know about the other projects in our surrounding regions that would have an impact on ours, one way or the other. I mean, whether or not they're, you know, for the funding, if Spotsylvania has something going on versus Stafford County and if there's any impact at all with that.
Certainly can provide that information. The Fredericksburg Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, FAMPO, they have the region-wide project list. And they put out a document, which is the constrained long-reach plan, which looks at funding for road projects for approximately 25 years. We can provide the commission with that data.
I've sat in on several of their, their extremely reformative and verbal ones.
So we'll pass that information along.
Anything anyone else has? Anything we missed, Mr. Harvey?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. McClendon.
Stacy? Anyone? Are you really? Congratulations. That's really super cool. On that wonderful note, we are adjourned.